Workers do this on a regular basis. When they're needed, they call. I know I have given them instructions that if we have an elderly person who has to come down to an embankment to bring their garbage can, we'll go up and get that garbage can, we'll empty it, and we'll take it back up for them. And our guys do this on a regular basis. I'm extremely proud of these three gentlemen for the actions they took, but I'm also extremely proud of our Public Works people in general. Several comments, compliments today to Public Works on the great job they've done on keeping our streets clean. I know they've got a big job in front of them because we're not even into winter yet, and we've already had the bad roads that we've had, but needed to bring that to the public's attention. Okay. What I have left, we've sent you a copy of. I have several appointments to make, reappointments, and a couple of first time. So what I would like to do is to address each one of these, tell you what it's about, and ask if you have any questions on them, and then when I'm finished, we can vote on all of them, if that's okay with you. They have quite a few on here because it's at the end of the year and they've reached their end of their term. Okay, the first one we have is an executive order to reestablish staggered terms and reappoint Lindsey Apple, Christopher Cool, Susan Craft, and Mark Hamel to the Board of Adjustments. As you saw that, we were way out of line as far as having too many people go off the board at the same time, and this way, we'll just replace a couple and continue to go on. We don't need to give up all of that experience at one time. Any question there?
I'm trying to understand the staggered terms. Why were we doing...
That requires you to have them go off, say, when it first starts, let's say it just started last year, it would say, the first person serves a one-year term, the second person serves a two-year term, three and four, and I think they want you to have as close to equal number of each. But over the years, apparently what happened was they weren't getting, that staggered somehow got lost. I don't know how, but last week, the Planning Commission voted to essentially add either, add on to, I don't think they added on to anybody's term, extended it, but what they did was they said after this one goes out, then we'll make the next term either end earlier or end later than it originally had. So we had to just kind of play with the numbers to get them staggered back, but we can go over them if you want. But, I mean, essentially, they drew out a chart and they made it work, and we just modeled our...
Simply going along with the suggestion they made and the request that they made.
We'll see, if you play out the numbers, and if everybody gets reappointed the way it's supposed to be, within four years, everybody will be back on track to be exactly the way it...
So two of them are gonna be, so in other words, two of them are going to have their terms end in the first year of, what is it? I want to say Olympiad because that's a four-year term.
December of 14.
And then two will drop off the second year of that four-year...
December of 15.
Okay.
We'll keep rotating them in.
And then one, and then there's gonna be one that's just gonna have the full four.
I think there's one, yeah.
Because it's, okay, that's fine.
And then after that, every single one of those will be back to a four-year term.
Okay. Executive Order, reappointing John Shirley to the Planning Commission for his second term. Any question on that one? Executive Order, appointing Byron Moran to the Planning Commission. We had one who has left us, Mr. Nguyen, so Mr. Moran will be finishing out his term, and then he will have two terms himself. I'm so glad that he agreed to take that position for us. Executive Order, reappointing Sandy Sowers and Bill Stark to the Board of Appeals for their second term. Executive Order, appointing Megan Travis, Les Jarvis, Terry Mauer to the Water Board. We had three valuable people that their terms expired. Any question on those?
Who's coming off the Water Board?
Mr. Roberts, Johnny Griffiths, and Ms. Travis. Executive Order, reappointing David Thompson to the Board of Ethics. And, an executive order, reappointing Russ Finley to the Parks and Recreation Board. Do we have any question on any of those?
The Parks Board was the only one that wasn't on my agenda.
No, it wasn't. I left that off. We sent you an executive order. You got the executive order late today, I think. Okay.
Mayor, we never mentioned Wayne Hoffman or Lauren Garrett on this. You got them on the very top. They weren't mentioned tonight.
Who?
Yeah, they're...
The first two at the very first page. Wayne Hoffman, you never mentioned either one of them.
I might have.
Yeah, they should be on there, too. Are we missing one?
I was going by my agenda.
Oh, those are all, yeah.
Yes, Wayne Hoffman. Wyatt Hoffman, rather.
They're in the staggered terms, is that, are they...
Those aren't actually...
Reappointments?
Let's see.
Think they're just part of the being staggered.
Yeah, those aren't actually being reappointed. What it is doing is changing the terms, and it says, once it expires, instead of for four more years, it goes for one more year. So the two people who aren't listed there aren't actually, we're not actually taking any action on them because they're still in effect, but what it's saying is, after their terms expire, they'll go for one more year, and then after, it'll go to a four-year term to get it back into that staggered basis.
Yes. So he can serve an extra year. Okay? Now, need a motion to approve, Mr. Thompson? Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, we have first reading of the floodplain ordinance sponsored by Mr. Thompson. You can do that in a short form.
Yeah, I'll try. An ordinance repealing existing provisions of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances relating to floodplain management and replacing them with a new flood damage prevention ordinance. Summary, Section 1. Repeal all previous ordinances, resolutions, and executive orders in conflict with this ordinance. Section 2. Enact a flood damage prevention ordinance as follows. Article 1. State statutory authorization, findings of fact, and purpose for the ordinance. Article 2. Defines terms relevant to the ordinance. Article 3. Provides that this ordinance pertains to all areas of special flood hazard within the city of Georgetown, Kentucky, as identified by the Federal Insurance Administration. Mandates that no structure or land in said areas shall hereafter be located or extended, converted, or structurally altered without compliance with its specifications, requirements, and provisions. Requires permits from the city as administrator and the Kentucky Division of Water prior to commencement of development activities in special flood hazard areas. Disclaims liability for reliance on ordinance provisions, provides that violations are misdemeanors and civil offenses. Violations of the provisions of this ordinance or failure to comply with any of its requirements, including violations of conditions and safeguards established in connection with granting of a variance or special condition, shall constitute a misdemeanor offense. Any person who violates this ordinance or fails to comply with any of its requirements shall, upon conviction thereof, be fined not less than $500 or imprisoned for not more than 365 days or both, and in addition, shall pay all costs and expenses involved in the case. Each day such violation continues shall be considered a separate offense. Nothing herein contained shall prevent the floodplain administrator from taking such other lawful acting as necessary to prevent or remedy any violation. Article 4. Designates the Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission as floodplain administrator, specifies the duties and rights of the floodplain administrator, including permit review, review of base flood data, notification, documentation of development, map determinations, right of entry, issuing stop work orders, and revocation of permits, limits liability of officers. Provides for expiration of permits if start of construction has not occurred timely after issued. Article 5. Requires that all new construction and substantial improvements in special flood hazard areas be constructed to certain minimum flood damage prevention standards. Sets forth standards for residential construction, non-residential construction, elevated structures, manufactured homes, and recreational vehicles, floodways, utilities, structures elevated on fill, and vegetative buffer strips. Provides that in all areas of special flood hazard, the lowest floor of any residential structure constructed or substantially improved shall have the lowest floor elevated at or above base flood elevation, or have said floor flood-proofed. Establishes standards for streams without established base flood elevation and/or floodways. Establishes standards for shallow flooding zones, subdivision proposals, accessory structures, and critical facilities. Article 6. Establishes appeals and variance procedures and conditions. Designates respective jurisdictions boards of adjustment as appeals and variance boards. Defines duties of appeals and variance boards and sets forth procedures. Provides for variance for historic structures. Article 7. Provides that if any portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unlawful, such portion shall be deemed a separate provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3. Provides that this ordinance shall become effective on passage and publication. The full text of ordinance 13- is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www georgetown ky go.
Okay, this will be the item we'll be coming back for on January the 6th for a second reading, because we have to have this in place by the 8th of January.
Mr. Mayor, if we don't have it in place by the 8th of January, what happens?
Mr. Engineer? What's gonna be our situation? I know I got a litter environmental today.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe people in the flood hazard area can buy flood insurance.
You all should also know that the vast majority, about 98% of this, is already in place. This simply incorporates the new changes, and we decided that we would simply, well, they changed the title of it, we would repeal it and reenact it in its entirety, but the difference is, and I think the folks from Planning and Zoning would be better suited to explain that, but that stuff's all not, all those requirements are, for the most part, there, including the...
Can you, for next time, can you send us, outline us, or bullet point or something, what the changes, what the changes are from the old versus to the new?
Absolutely, absolutely.
On that, okay.
I think the largest change was a map revision.
And can that, I'm glad you said that. Can we have, for next time, can we get a copy of what the old map is, was, versus what the new map is?
What's that map revision? What's the new, what's the change in the floodplain?
They do a new study based off of, you know, different changes in climate, and they run new models and figure out the new flood elevations.
Is it floodplains on the nav, not the navigable streams, but the named streams, or is there a new, is there a new flood area?
I'm not sure exactly what streams they classify. Brent, I don't know if you have a better definition on what they actually look at?
On the map itself, it's on like 20 sheets that are this big. I don't really think it'd be very difficult to show the old and the new. It's on our website, it's been there for some time. They redrew the maps actually a few years ago, but there was a little legal thing, something didn't get done properly, or didn't get done on time, or whatever, so we're just now finally getting to the point where they've said we need to adopt the new maps. I can't tell you all the differences. They did a more detailed study over a much larger part of the county before, a lot of it's estimated, so a lot, a much larger part of the county now has base flood elevations, which is a much more accurate way to do things. It took some areas that weren't in the floodplain and put them in a floodplain. It also took a lot of areas that were in a floodplain and took them out of a floodplain. So it's, it'd be difficult to point out each and every little area that that happened, but the studies were actually, you know, performed by consultants for FEMA. We didn't have anything to do with that necessarily. And on the ordinance itself, the previous ordinance was from 2007, and it was based on the state's model. This new one is also based on the state model, it's just the state revised their model. So they changed, I've got, I think here that where I've marked a few little things that were changed, just mainly some definitions. They changed some wording here and there, but the main thing is that this ordinance refers to the new maps that will be effective January 8th, where the 2000 ordinance still referred to the 1981 maps, that's how old they are. And if, he was correct, that if the ordinances aren't adopted by January 8th, then the city, and this also applies to all four communities, county, Sadieville, and Stampin' Ground, all four are in the same situation. They have to adopt, each one has to adopt it separately, but they will be suspended from the program, and once you're suspended, then no new policies can be written.
No, it's been suspended from the program.
In this case, the city, any properties within the city.
Are you talking about the individual property owner, then can't, won't have flood insurance? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm not sure if they would lose insurance, or if it's just that people can't buy new insurance, but once, once it, even if you're suspended, once you become under compliance, then they reinstate you, so even if, I'm assuming that even if it weren't to get passed by the 8th, if it was passed three or four weeks later, then you'd be reinstated, so you'd have a window where people couldn't buy insurance, but it...
Could you give us a little more information on that insurance part of it, Andrew, on how that works, how it does and doesn't work? Because is the insurance that the folks have to buy now, is it the federal insurance that they have to buy from the federal government?
It's just any flood insurance.
Any flood insurance with something.
All of it?
Yes, just any flood insurance.
Okay. Well, let me ask you this. The properties that I was handling on Elkhorn Meadows, were they from the new maps that...
Any policies right now that either bought, or renewed, or whatever, are still based on the old maps because the new ones aren't official?
But, if we adopt this, January 8th makes those maps official, right?
That's correct, that's correct.
So they'll go by that?
Mayor, let me ask you this. Would the area on Willow Lane that we've talked about, is that area like considered something on the floodplain? Not in any way? Okay, that clears it up.
No, it's mainly your, you know, your streams, your water.
The one, the actual streams that are mapped.
Like Elkhorn Creek?
Yeah.
Like the peninsula and Elkhorn Meadows, would they be affected by these new maps?
Well, in that particular case, the new and the old are almost identical.
They are?
Yeah. There's very few places where the elevation changed. It's just out in the county, they hadn't done accurate studies before.
Okay.
So in that, in that case, the maps are much more accurate, and so there are some changes, but along your main creeks, there's very little difference.
This talks about having administrator in here, and it talks about, I haven't read in depth, but it talks about having administrator in here, and that Planning and Zoning is the administrator, but is it just Planning and Zoning is the administrator, it's not talking about creating a actual administrator to enforce this? Is that correct?
No, no, that language is identical to the ordinance that's already in place. I happen to be the coordinator, floodplain coordinator for Scott County. The administrators, just, we've been, Planning and Zoning's been that for...
So all the streams within the city limits of Georgetown, you're saying, are basically have already been, not just mapped, but also the elevations of the floodplains are already pretty well established, and those haven't changed, at least within the city limits? Is that correct?
That's true, yes.
So no big changes along Roll Spring, or Kane Run, or Langley Run?
Well, again, I'd have to look at them in detail, but no, I don't recall much of anything in the city limits having any changes.
You should also know that all of the other jurisdictions in Scott County are reading an identical ordinance. I believe Stampin' Ground read theirs on Friday.
Was it Thursday or Friday last week?
Thursday, Friday, yeah. We just wanted, we wanted it to try to read identical to the extent possible because they're all falling under the same jurisdiction.
Andrew, I don't know if anybody has any concerns that we're not aware of on the council. Obviously, there have been a few questions, but based on what I know, there's a level of importance for us to get it passed by that date, because property transfers, if there is flood insurance that needs to take place, those won't be able to happen without being able to issue the flood insurance. So I wouldn't want us to delay it. If there's a concern or question we have, I'd want us to try to get it resolved.
Or even financing.
But you're saying there's no major changes made here?
What we'll do is, after this meeting, we will get an answer to those questions, we will get a summary of those changes, we'll email them to you all, and that way you'll have almost an entire month to think about them. If you have questions, you can email us about them, and we will work through them, and hopefully we can get all those resolved and get a second reading. And if there are any necessary changes, we can, we have time to get them there.
Thank you. Okay. Second reading of the budget amendment ordinance, sponsored by Mr. Lusby and Ms. Tackett.
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Whereas the annual budget adopted by the city council on July 2, 2013, and amended on October 28, 2013, needs to be amended. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Summary. Ordinance 13-023 is amended as follows. General Fund. Occupational License Fees. Net profits are increased by $408,200. General Government Expenditures are increased by $47,688. Grant Fund. Intergovernmental Revenues are increased by $19,500. Fire Department Expenditures are increased by $19,500. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www georgetown ky go. Publicly introduced and read the first time, it should be December 9, 2013. Oh, I'm sorry, December, November 25th, yeah, second reading. December 9th. Publicly read second time, December 9, 2013.
Motion for approval?
Motion, Mayor.
Mr. Tackett?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lusby. Any discussion on this? This is the second reading. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lusby?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Tingel-Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yeah.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Ms. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, very good.
I think the mayor, you just wanted me to briefly mention and let everyone know, we did get the RFQ out for the construction management at risk firm. It was advertised in the paper on Saturday. We've also advertised with Lynn Imogen in Lexington because they get a lot of work from contractors and firms, so that we get a little wider net, and it's on our website. We've had some trouble uploading documents to our website, so anyone interested can contact the clerk's office, and they will send them a copy, RFQ, but we just want to let you know, we got that turned around quickly so that we can keep everything moving.
I appreciate you getting right on this because we do not want to extend this out any farther than we absolutely have to. So, this is in the works. Second reading of an ordinance accepting new city streets in Lake Forest subdivision, sponsored by Ms. Tackett.
An ordinance accepting new city streets in the Lake Forest subdivision, Unit 1A and Unit 3A, and including them on the official city street map. Whereas KRS 100.277 subsection 4 provides the procedure for the adoption of streets by the city, and whereas, the Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission has recommended the city's acceptance of streets and rights of way within the following subdivision. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Georgetown. Section 1. The following streets are hereby accepted by the city and included in the official city street map. Elkhorn Green subdivision, Unit 7, Sections 5 and 6. Unit 1A, Cabinet 9/399, 101207, Lake Forest Drive, Bay Shore Court, Clearwater Court, Laurel Falls Drive, 20 lots. Unit 3A, Cabinet 1071, 112608, accesses above streets, 10 lots. The following is a summary of the street inventory. Lake Forest Drive, 637 feet, from Harmony Ridge Road on north to the south line of lots 11 and 12, Unit 1A. Bay Shore Court, 189 feet, all. Laurel Falls Drive, 185 feet, from Lake Forest Drive to east line of lots 14 and 15. Clearwater Court, 133 feet, all. Total length of streets is approximately 1,144 feet or .22 miles. Section 2. If any subsection, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. Publicly introduced and read first time, October 28, 2013. Publicly read second time, November 11, 2013. That should be December 9, 2013.
Make it change. Motion for approval? Yes, ma'am?
Second.
Second by Ms. Singer. Okay, any discussion? Very good. Roll call vote, second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. Lusby?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Tingel-Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Ms. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Chief, you gonna give us an update?
I just wanted...
Of all the exciting things that have been happening in the police department?
Yeah, a lot of exciting things, a lot of exciting things last night. I did want to recognize Officer Randy Garrison for his work on the Christmas thing. He went to all the businesses and got pretty much people working together on it, so he did actually put a lot of his own time, as well as police hours into it, so. I was at my daughter's wedding, but I understand it went well, so. Congratulations. Thank you.
Look at you. Council, any comments?
I just want to say it's been an awesome year.
It has been, it has been.
Here, here.
Here, here. And I look forward to next year, too. Everybody have a Merry Christmas.
We had a lot of accomplishments. Sure did. A lot of long meetings, but got stuff done. I don't know of any huge issues that we have hanging over our heads right now, which is, which is good. Glad to be able to say that.
I'd say thank you. Thank you as well. It's been a very tough year. We've had a lot happen in my household, and I've been, I completed my masters this year, so my temperament each week has not always been level, I might add, so I appreciate your patience while I've been completing what the state has required me to do.
Well, you should be congratulated, that's a great accomplishment. Very pleased to hear that.
Mayor, there's one thing. I did have a person, it's funny, whenever I go to Save-A-Lot, I can just go in there in safe anonymity and just go get my granola bars or coffee, whatever I buy, but when I go to Kroger, it's like people, everybody knows I'm on council, I want to go to Kroger. It's weird. By the way, I had a gentleman come up to me in Kroger, and he asked what our plan was as far as, you know, back, back a few years ago with Ice Storm, when a lot of people were out of power, is there an emergency shelter that's been established? Is there a place that people can look to as far as...
I think we had those established over the weekend.
Okay.
I think we're going to use one of the elementaries.
It was Garth back in '03. It was Garth Elementary in '03, but I didn't know...
I'm sure those will be made available, absolutely. I don't know of any other place we could...
Does that run through EMA, or the judge's office? Is there a particular...
I think it goes through EMA. I think Jack takes care of that, Jack Donovan. We'll double check on it.
Okay, if we can, if we can even, maybe even try to put an article in the paper or a press release along those lines, just to let people know.
With all the ice we had this weekend, that's...
Well, I mean, all the ice may be getting tonight, but, yeah, the gentleman had asked me about that, and I thought that was a good thing to bring up.
We will check that out, absolutely.
And, oh, yeah, do you have, I mean, is there anybody in City Hall, or maybe yourself, or maybe... yourself, or maybe Ms. Wilson, you know, as far as just maybe a liaison to the paper that even could write? You know, I know here at, at work, Earlene used to write a, a column every month, and now my new boss writes a column every month, you know, as far as what's going on at the library. Is there anybody like a liaison with the paper or?
Well, we're constantly in touch with Mr. Atkins.
Atkins, but maybe...
He's doing a good job writing.
Maybe, maybe that, maybe an article could be written as far as where shelter, you know, shelter is.
They don't miss a whole lot that's going on.
Well, I know they're in here a lot, but I was just saying, I know, I know.
Good deal. I would like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, since our next meeting will be in two thousand and fourteen. And be happy, have a great holidays, and be safe.
See you next year.
Absolutely. Motion for adjournment? All in favor, aye? Opposed?
Yeah.
Thank you.